Okay, we're ready.
Call this meeting to order. Please silence all your electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation by Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you, Council President. Please join me in the Lord's Prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
The pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no degree of justice or error.
This will be the special conference followed by the regular business meeting. The first item on the special conference is bail reform. Ms. Christian, you wanted this put on?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In 2019, the New York State Bail Reform Cash Bill was eliminated for most misdemeanors, non-felon charges including stalking, assault without serious injury, burglary, many drug offenses, and even some kinds of arson and robbery. This law harms police, public safety, and it's up to the judges to eliminate these laws. These laws need to be changed and revised. I'm asking us to send a letter to the governors, state legislators, and the judges to repeal this law. I hear of repeated offenders all the time in the news. Our city is not excluded either from these violators either. I have people that feel they are prisoners in their houses because of being verbally abused, threatened, and intimidated. So, I am pleading with us that we send a letter to the judges, judicial department, whatever, so we could try to eliminate this. Coming from us as a body would mean a great deal.
Rachel, you were, did you look into this at all? I saw you sent some.
Yeah, so there, session ended Thursday in Albany, or early Friday morning. There was a package of bills put forward that would, one of them would restore judicial discretion, but it was not brought up. It's sponsored by the minority, so it was not brought up to the floor for any type of vote. At this time, I don't know if there is any legislation to reform bail reform that's brought forward by the majority, but I did ask the police chief if he could just give us some insight on what's going on here in Batavia and other large metros, if we can have him come up, please. Thanks, Chief.
Yep. So, yes, bail reform affects us all. Luckily, we live in a community that there is not a lot of violent crimes that take place, so our numbers are fairly small compared to larger metropolitan areas to our east and west, as well as downstate. However, we do deal with issues of repeat offenders. As everyone is aware, there have been several of them featured in the news lately, recently, specifically, there's been a couple of cases that we feel as a police department that if a person was held on bail during their initial crime, that they may not have committed, you know, the following crimes that they did commit, but it is hard to really pinpoint that to say that we can for sure say they would not have committed another crime. We do not know that. In our larger cities, Buffalo and Rochester, you are seeing increasing violent crime. I was able to get some statistics from New York City. They have a team of people down there that track these things. Their recidivism statistics are off the charts. Nineteen point five percent of the people that they tracked were rearrested once they were initially arraigned for a non-bailable offense. They saw a big increase in their gun violence and gun crimes. Looking specifically at burglaries, they found that twenty-six percent of the people arrested for burglary in 2020 were rearrested within thirty days of committing that offense. We have seen similar statistics across our area, but again, our population, our pool of statistics is much smaller here in the city. But I will tell you, you know, officers are very frustrated with these new laws. They do feel that it's a catch and release, if you will. It does have an impact on our victims and our witnesses coming forward, as you had alluded to. We do get a little more resistance when we ask victims and witnesses for statements to come forward and come out on the record. There is some current legislation that is also very disappointing to hear regarding raising the age of criminal responsibility for juveniles specifically. They agreed to raise that from the age of seven to the age of twelve now. So, in other words, you cannot arrest anyone under the age of twelve once a governor does sign that. That's kind of the state of affairs. Oh, parole legislation, oh, I'm sorry. So, there's a parole legislation package. The biggest part of it did not pass, but my understanding is we'll bring that back into the special legislation or special session, which is the Compassionate Release Act. So, basically, if you've served fifteen years and you're fifty-five years old, no matter what the crime was, you're going to be released.
That's what did not pass.
That did not pass.
Right.
So, yeah. Currently, the parole bill lesses more, they're calling it, limits the reasons a person can be reincarcerated for technical parole violations, so being out after curfew, being caught with alcohol, drugs, minor arrest, those type of things. It also allows people to earn good time credit towards their parole. Normally, you see that in a prison setting where people can earn good time to be released to parole early or released early. You may see that as a conditional parole. And it changes the process for having parole revoked. Non-technical parole violations include all felony and misdemeanor offenses and material violations of parole conditions for individuals on parole for sex crimes as well. So, it's a, it's a big package, only part of it passed, but there will be more.
So then, the bill, A5265, did not pass in the Assembly, correct?
That's the.
Yeah, that's the judicial discussion.
Right.
It wasn't even brought to the floor for a vote because it is a minority-sponsored bill, so there's not enough members in the Assembly or Senate to bring it forward through committee onto the floor for any type of vote.
So, tell me, this would, a letter help from this body to, you know, get other councils involved throughout the state to do something with this? I mean, our hands are tied right now, and I really, you know, it shouldn't be that way.
I think the discussion tonight helps. I think it's important that citizens and legislators are aware of how this council feels, how they want to protect the community against offenders. I think that's helpful. I know the Chiefs Association, certainly, it might be helpful to support their efforts to combat this type of legislation with a letter to the Chiefs Association or possibly the PBA to let them know we support the officers, as council as a whole might want to consider that. I don't know that our letter essentially helps because session is done, honestly, for the year.
Well, my letter went out to Judge Zambito, Judge Rogers, Judge Burns, Assemblyman Steve Hawley, Congressman Chris Jacobs, and Governor Andrew Cuomo. I mean, we're sitting with our hands tied. I mean, we've got.
You sent it to Brad as well?
No, I forgot.
I mean, I've talked to both of them.
Yeah.
And I know they're pushing hard to fix it already.
Right.
Before COVID. They knew in January of 2020.
Oh, yeah.
It was going to be a nightmare, and then COVID hit two months into the year, three months into the year, and it made it even worse.
Right.
Because then people were damaging and vandalizing, and they were just getting released in New York City, and there was, they were up in arms on it, but it doesn't seem to be reaching anyone. And nobody, they don't seem to be paying attention to the problems.
You know, I think though, from what Rachel said, I think sending a letter to the Police Association and going through, I think that's a great start, because again, you've got a whole body, a whole group that they're going to listen to. I'm not saying that they wouldn't listen to us, but I think going through the police and letting people know that we support our police and the associations, I think that would be a great start.
Well, maybe even better is to send it to our representatives.
That's right.
State Assembly, and then send a copy to the.
There you go.
And make it public with the copy. Just a thought about.
Yeah, I would just prefer to send a letter to the governor, both the Senate and Assembly Minority and Majority leaders stating the city of Batavia opposes this.
I mean, I don't know, we could send it to whoever, we could make one letter and then use it as.
That's right.
In one letter, right?
But judges can't do that. A judge.
But it's up to their discretion, though. Oh, yes, it's, isn't it?
No, no, the new legislation would give them more discretion in setting bail in certain types of.
Yeah, they've been handicapped, and they know it.
They're very, very frustrated themselves.
Oh, yeah.
Their hands are tied, just.
Yes.
And there was some movement on this back in the early part of the year, because a young gentleman was going to propose to his fiancee, and he was killed by a drunk driver, I think up in the Long Island area, and that person who killed him had just been arrested a short, like a week earlier on DWI felony. He was released, and now he's driving another felony, and he ended up killing somebody. A nice young person that didn't even get their life started. So, it started some momentum, and then COVID distracted everybody, and then it got forgotten, and then it just got worse. And nobody was in session, and they were in limited sessions, and emergency orders, and they were still under a state of emergency. Our governor is still pretty much doing what he wants without a normal process taking place, so.
Now, do we need consensus on this, or she can say?
I would say, I would say, if we have a consensus for her, for the city manager to draft a letter.
Yeah.
And I think she's got an idea of what we're thinking about here.
Right.
And then we could, that'll get sent around before the next meeting. We could make any revisions into it.
Good.
And then we could bring it up at the next meeting, and then we could, you know, vote to accept it, I would assume, and then vote from there. It's not really a resolution, but it's an action that we're taking.
No, I'd like, yeah, but I'd also want the police associate. I really think that they should be sent something too.
Well, no, they'll be getting a copy of it. I mean, as long as they know, I would think if I was in their position, as long as they knew that you were fighting for us on the national or state level, I think that would be a good step in the right direction.
Yes, they could see that, okay.
And I mean, we're publicly, like I've said before, we are very pro-police here. We support our police department. We're talking today about building them a much-needed building and getting them some repairs on their old building. It's going to come up today, so, and we've saw a good so far retention. I mean, we're not, they're not, we're not driving officers away like some communities are by their comments and things. I mean.
Yeah, that's correct. You're seeing it in the larger communities where the officers are leaving it up there.
So, they're retiring at like a forty-five percent increased rate. Hopefully, we can be stable, and we show their, our support in discussions like this, and they know that we're behind them, so.
Right, yeah. Well, thank you.
Anybody else want to add anything? Okay, are you satisfied with that?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Okay, Police Station Feasibility Study.
Yep, we have a presentation. So, we're going to.
You mean this?
Screen, yeah. That's all that? Thanks, Lisa. So, we're going to review, I know that everyone received a copy of the feasibility study in your packet along with a couple diagrams and maps. We're kind of going to go over the current situation of the police station today, and then we're going to get, introduce Ken Pearl to talk about the feasibility of building a new police station at Elva Place. You ready? Do I have to announce? There we go. Thumbs up, right? Was that new?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, as everyone here is aware, the Batavia Police Department operates out of a hundred and sixty-year-old mansion, and that is serving for a twenty-first executive police station. The Brisbane mansion was constructed in eighteen fifty-five. Larry Barnes is here to correct me whenever I get anything wrong. Larry, I appreciate you coming tonight. And in nineteen eighteen, the mansion was converted into Batavia City Hall. Two thousand and four, the Batavia Police Department was left as the lone occupant of the building. And so far, council, many of you have sat through all of these, no less than five studies to determine the future of the police in Batavia, had started in nineteen ninety-one. Lisa, thanks. And with that, I'm going to introduce the police chief, Sean Hyde Bush, to talk about her current.
So, as many of you are aware, you've entered the building. Some of you have spent a lot more time there than others. I think you've been there for thirty-some years.
Sure, but they last, and it wasn't there last night.
Intimately familiar with this, but I'll just give you a, you know, a quick overview from left to right, what you're seeing. On the left is our fifty-year-old boiler system, so this is a hot water boiler system that heats the entire facility. Again, it's just around fifty years old in time. Not to say it can rain, if older, it will. The second one in the middle picture is the main entrance to the facility looking out. So, this is the main entrance that every single person that walks through that door or uses our building has to come through. That includes victims, witnesses, juveniles, sex offenders, staff, people looking for a report. There's no elevator. That central stair shaft goes all the way up to the top floors, and there is multiple levels because of the way that the building is constructed and reconstructed over the years. The far one on the right is our restroom or our waiting area. Due to COVID, our door has been locked because we're not letting people come in and out at, in free, as, you know, their own will at this point. So, this is the waiting area for everyone to come to the police department. As you can see, it's completely open to the elements. There's no heating, there's no cooling in this area. It does get icy, it does get wet, and it does, the roof over this part of this facility, this leaks as well. So, from left to right here, this is the men's locker room. This is above that building that's not connected to the main building. There's heating and cooling issues with this facility because the downstairs is not occupied. It's used as a storage location. There's no shower or restroom in the men's or women's locker room. The walls are deteriorating, the windows leak. Clearly, need to repair. The center is our upstairs briefing area. I think this does work. Again, this is another section of the building where the roof does leak. It's adjacent to all the administrative offices, so my office, the assistant chief's office, actually, our little kitchenette is right off of this, so this is where the officers gather at the beginning and the end of their shift to exchange information and go over pertinent issues of the day. So, it can get kind of noisy up there. There's also, just to your right, there's a door right at the beginning of that. That's our ERT, our armory room. It has to be there because there's a secure vault in there. So, that's at the top of the building, so in order to, when the officers are deployed for an ERT call, all the gear has to come out of that room and down those stairs. And then when they come back in, it's got to go out of the van and back up because there's no secure parking as well. Farthest to the right, that's just a picture of the bay window attached to our detective bureau. Above it is the fire escape for the, for the building. This build, this particular piece is separating from the building. It has been for many years. The exterior is whole, is in very poor condition. Windows are old, some don't open, there's no central air for the majority of the building. Heating zones are inconsistent. Nothing, nothing much changed.
Thank you. So, the next slide, I wanted to remind council, about a year ago in July, you authorized the spending of reserves to contract with Ken Pearl from Architects Unlimited to conduct a feasibility study for a new police station at Elva Place. Prior to that, there was a police task force report done when the former manager, Manager Molina, was here that recognized Elva Place as the second-best location for the police station in the city. I believe it's the first-best location because the city actually owns the property. We were unable to obtain property at the Swan Street location many years ago before I came to the city. So, I wanted to remind everyone of the goals that we set out to achieve when doing the feasibility study. Create a standalone premise that can serve as a long-term building and secure parking facility for the City of Batavia Police Department. As you all know, there's no secure parking right now. Our cars are out, as they are, in a public parking lot. To improve the quality, efficiency, security, and regulatory compliance features of the services and activities provided by the Batavia Police Department, as you saw, access to our building is not handicap accessible. You have to be able to go up flights of stairs to get in there. Even at times when we may have members of our police force on light duty, they can't come in and do administrative work because they cannot go up the stairs. So, there's a real disadvantage not having an ADA-accessible building. To enhance opportunities and meet community needs, to create a facility without barriers or obstructions, accessibility, and usable by persons with disabilities, which we just went over. So, now I'd like to welcome Ken Pearl of Architects Unlimited. He's a founding member of Building Science Services. He served as president and principal in charge of Architecture Unlimited LLC since its founding in nineteen ninety-five. His original goal was to create a unique architecture and C E O practice that could provide high-quality professional services and value-driven and innovative service delivery methods for its clients. His biography goes on and on. I won't go into it, and at this point, I'd like to introduce Ken to come up and talk to you about the feasibility study he conducted at the Elva Place location. Thank you.
Do you need me on, everybody? Which is the button on your thing?
The button is that one, and I think you just pointed at the screen when you're ready.
Okay. I had a little involvement, not so much formally, but you had some other studies going on at the same time I was doing a little work, either on my forensic side or George Van Ness, because somebody I had crossed paths with at work, and then some of the work I've done about some roof issues in the past. I became aware of it just because I was getting a probe for some questions at the time I was finishing a police station we were doing elsewhere. The question that was asked was building poet Rachel just talked about, which was that targeting of the Elva, the Bank Street, and Elva Place corner, was more specifically, could a project fit there? And that's really what the study was focused solely on, was not analyzing any other studies or any other past history, was really just specific to that question, is could we fit there, and if we could, what would be as well? And to answer that question, we determined that four basic criteria needed to be met. And I'll apologize in advance, I am a much more technical architect in terms of my background and what I do than an artistic architect, so we will be relying on some quick sketches and doodles. Of the four criteria, I took this whole survey, and we marked it up to illustrate what I'm talking about, and just for orientation, maybe this will work. Okay, along the bottom is Elva. Up and down the side is Bank Street. These, this right here, this rectangle, is the existing public parking lot. So, of the four criteria, the first was, could we save an adequate amount of public parking that could still be used by these neighboring businesses and agencies? The second was, could we create enough secure parking within the wall or a fence system for the police department itself, a secure parking area? Number three was, how much underground public infrastructure are we going to have to deal with? There's obviously pipes and utility components that are under the parking lot and the same under the public street. And then, do we leave ourselves enough options after all that to go through a design and engineering process, and would a viable project come out of that for the building itself? And, I'm going to jump my slides a little bit here. Again, this is a very rough, rough sketch. What we did is we took an aerial image and then just hand drew on it. And what you're looking at there is how we went into those four questions. Here's what we found. To the first one, yes, we can maintain public parking. We'd have to reconstruct it, the parking lot, you know, it pitches, it collects water, snowmeltings, that nature. We wreaked a little havoc on that in terms of what the parking lot would need to do for drainage. So, the parking lot itself would have to be substantially reconstructed, but it would look just like it does in this aerial image. And we can keep enough, you know, we've spent some time studying how those businesses are using the parking, and we're confident that we would have plenty of parking left over. The L-shaped parking lot would also still maintain access onto the public road, so it would not become a dead end. You'd still be able to get out in Elva, you'd still be able to get out in Bank. There's an area to the second question, can we find a way to create secure parking for the police? So, we're drawing an area here. In the sketch, it has a purple roof on it. What you're looking at here is basically a short wall with some type of iron gate or decorative gate above it. Yes, this middle area would become the police parking area. And then, we do have enough options to design a building. So, what you're looking at there is just a rough conclusion of everything we've worked on for months. Picture an L-shaped roof, and then we create a flat, we're kind of hitting off the backside. What that allows us to do is create a public entry right here at Elva and Bank and maximize the public roadways, something that makes sense to people. You would have a dedicated primary entrance that normal people know how to approach that building. You do not have that now, obviously. You have to find your way to the back of the building. Some people obviously still see the front door to the existing police station and try to use it. So, the concept here is to basically have as much of your public and community right up front and move your operations more to the back and your security even further to the back. This sketch was just an effort to get an understanding of how the secure parking would work and really was to identify what kind of problems we might have. So, to the right here, what you're looking at is the back of a police station. We know we would have some infrastructure, so you're going to want to put an emergency generator on the building, plus the code's going to require things like that. So, there's going to be outside infrastructure. We don't really want to clutter up the Bank facade or the Elva Place facade. We do have enough room to get utilities into the back in terms of what needs to be showing. We have enough room for gates where people could, you know, the police could come in and out two different sides of it. Well over thirty parking spaces in a very open area, which will allow a little flexibility for either additional parking or those occasions where they've got large evidence or other types of vehicles there for service work or on the building, things of that nature, other city trucks being there. Off to the left, you're just looking at a small storage shed that would most likely just be for utility-type functions, things specific to taking care of the property. A small lawn area could be created for canine accommodation. What you're looking at basically is a wall, but it'd be something architectural, something appropriate for an urban setting. So, again, about thirty-plus parking spots in the main area, and then enough for parking right up against the building along with obviously the garage parking that would be proposed for the project as well. There are a lot of, there was a myriad of issues we had to think out. We don't communicate them all in these sketches, but the overall designing, planning processes would be complicated. It'll be a lengthy architectural and engineering process. But we've sort of jumped into that process to predict how many problems or technical roadblocks we would run into and find out how many of them are, that we could overcome. And in a nutshell, the studies confirm that the existing parkings, the public parking lot, I'm referring to it as a public parking lot, I'm sorry if you have a different name for it, but the end result is that it is a good option to consider for a new facility. From a technical perspective, I'm very confident in saying that in terms of what's in the report. However, some of you may already know this, the world of construction and related cost is a bit topsy-durvy right now, to say the least. It's very challenging to do cost estimating at the moment. We're a little less confident in that. So, what we did, normally, our estimating process would be an internal estimate, and then we would bring in a second opinion system, either to another cost estimating firm. then we would bring in a second opinion system, either to another cost estimating firm or another design firm or even another construction firm, and we'd get a second, you know, look at what we're coming up with. In this case, we went to five, just because nobody's comfortable doing it right now. You know, the joke is, give me, if you would like an estimate for next week, I can do that, but one for next year, that's, that's different, that's predicted. So we, to, to get past that, what we did is we basically really made it a much more involved process, and then we went back to each other and challenged each other, reviewed our, our numbers, and this is what we came up with, this is the summary. It obviously ends there in the bold at $10.8 million. That is for, in a nutshell, all the main light items that you see summarized there. It would be a new building, site work specific to the building and the parking. The public parking lot is a separate standalone project. We have a small contingency in there for environmental risk, not because we know of anything or suspect anything, but simply because it's an old urban site and the history of it's pretty lengthy, so we think that's appropriate to earmark some money. Some normal contingencies for the project. And then on top of that, you would obviously be involved with architects, engineers, geotech surveys, which are basically underground studies. F F N E is abbreviation for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and obviously a police station will have a significant amount typical of an office, typical of garage spaces and maintenance needs, security features, things of that nature. Management, administrative costs with running the project from the city's perspective, administering various contracts with all the different entities will be involved, miscellaneous expense for a project line for expenses, you'll probably have insurance costs and a variety of other things involved. So that adds $2 million to the $8.8 million for the building and site, and again summarizes at $10.8 million. Below at the bottom, we had three other light items going as a thought process, they're listed as alternates number one through three. I did provide an estimate to the question about whether or not it'd be a good idea to, or what would be involved, I should say, with putting a roof over the secure parking area. That question was rooted initially simply in how would the city plow? You know, when you have a secure parking lot, it's not so easy to push things to the lawn. Vehicles are, in that setting, are working at 24-hour operations as opposed to business hours. So that was, that 2.6 million is basically consideration to doing a structural steel roof over the building. It would not be walls, it would not be a heated building or anything of that nature, it would simply be shielding the parking lot from rain and snow. Alternates number two and number three are part of other studies that I'm aware you're doing, the engine, water main, it's simply, you have some archaic water services out in the street that might not be able to handle either the pressure or the capacities for modern fire suppression systems, sprinkler systems in the building. Bank Street, traffic, pedestrian, calving, safety, there's things you've been working on already that you're more aware to some degree than I am. So I'm listening to him as a holding spot, just obviously those will be part of the discussion. And I think with that, the only other thing I'll mention, the schedule is based on a calendar that takes you around the end of 2023. So that's what we're basing that estimate on right now, is if you were to do something within the next two, two and a half years.
That $10.8, is that if you were to build tomorrow?
Yeah. That'd be if you were going to bid in about a year.
Because prices of material will go down eventually.
We're hoping, but right now for the way the market is, we're basing it on the market now.
And that 2.6, it's just, just for the roof itself, that little height?
No, that, because of the span of it, it's what-
Clear span?
I'm sorry?
It's a clear span.
It would be a clear span, very similar to a metal building or warehouse-type structure.
I get it.
You'd be looking at steel columns and beams about 20, 25 feet apart. Structural steel system, lighting, fire suppression, be the only thing involved.
Um, yeah, let's talk about the images now, and then we'll talk about, our last slide talks about bonding capacity and that stuff.
Behind me is, two of these images are what we just saw in the presentation. The, I'm sorry, three of them are. The fourth one is simply, we did put some work into sorting out thoughts on floor plans. Normally in a feasibility study, you do something similar to what you would experience before, block diagrams, public diagrams, you're just showing general shapes and sizes, where roofs would be. We were concerned about the risk of going into a tight site with that limited thought. We actually put a little effort in the past couple of months designing a couple of floor plans. They're just hand sketches and such. But in the end, what we did is we just put the best couple of ideas within all the different plans we were sorting through and sketching, and that's what this is, is a cleaned-up block diagram, and the colors are somewhat coded to the different functions. So for example, the yellow is simply illustrating more publicly orientated spaces. So this bottom right-hand corner, again, Bank Street, Elva, and what you're looking at is the public entrance and how people would first be able to get into the building and what types of functions are administered, for example, interview rooms, bathrooms. The opposite end would be parking lot, and this is showing where staff would generally enter, or at different places, utilities. Started to think out a little bit about where would you get your vehicles, and how would you start thinking about taking care of the building and such. So in a different form, we can probably talk in more detail about what some of these are, because some of these is regulated spaces and such, so things that operations are such, are we to achieve. But I'm going to leave this with Rachel as well, so for any follow-up thoughts or studies, I'm sure that Trix will remember this or try, and some of the discussions we had, if you want to ask her some questions later.
Thank you.
Rachel, if you have that, the roof on that, you still need a sally port? I'm sorry? So they call a sally port to bring in prisoners?
They have a-
If it's secure, if it's secure gated, and you have a roof, do you still need to have a sally port?
Yeah, because the sally port is also enclosed from the weather entirely.
That's true.
You know, and it is a controlled area where you have your transfer of prisoners take place rather than out in the open parking lot.
And at this point, the roof is over the parking is listed as alternate one because it's definitely an alternate.
Right.
I don't know, maybe, and Ken, maybe you kind of can't answer this, but pricing pre-COVID, would this have come in around the $9 million mark, same, everything being equal? I mean, is that the installation cost we're seeing here?
Yeah, the last year has clobbered us. This building ballpark is 19,000 square feet. Three and a half years ago, I finished a 19,000-square-foot police station in a town only 15 miles away. And we, that 8.8 number now compared to then, it went from, we were about 5.7 three years
So-
What is it, a square foot?
We were about 265 back then, we're a little over 330 now.
So with that, I've been analyzing the, originally analyzing a $9 million public improvement bond. I had our friends, Jeff Smith, run the numbers for a $10 million public improvement bond for 30 years of borrowing. The payments annually with principal and interest will range from $425,000 to $507,000 annually. By 2025, the city can absorb debt payments of $570,000 because of certain debt rolling off. And in the past, especially this last year, that rolled off, including Dwyer Stadium, in the budget, council had the foresight to preserve those debt payments by funding reserves. So that is still available right now to the tune of $350,000. While other debt rolls off, we certainly will have enough to fund a $10 million police station. We'd need to look to other types of grants possibly to bring into the project to fund the remainder of the project. The specific debt rolling off is an energy lease, a tandem axle municipal lease, and the ERP software system. While I was looking at the debt schedules, there will not be room for other borrowing in the general fund until 2033, as we move forward with this project. At that point, City Hall principal and interest payments drop significantly, and we would have another $164,000, and by 2036, the entire debt of City Center would be paid off. So, long story short, there is, we do have the ability to borrow and absorb this debt with current debt rolling off. And again, grants can be applied for to lower the cost to the general fund if we could bring it down to a lower price. So with that, I think the next slide is a discussion about the current facility, and then we have questions and answers and timeline. So right now, the current facility, you had a resolution and memo in your packet about a roof replacement for $50,000. Over the weekend, we got new numbers, and the cost is $100,000, so you have a replacement request to replace that roof at the new facility, and we can review that more in the next item of the agenda. The police chief talked about where it is leaking and what work it will need. There is other big items like the boiler system, but at this point, we're trying to put as little as possible into that facility, but keeping the employees safe and healthy before we can move into a new station, which I do think with this stu, with this site and with our capacity to borrow is the right move to make. The next steps in this feasibility study outline you guys were given in your packets talks about the city moving towards an RFQ to architectural and engineering firms in September 1st of 2021. We would like to go out to solicit architecture and engineering firms and surveyors, and once that's completed, we would bring that back to council for contract approval and execution, and also a final bond resolution for your approval at that time, and you would see that in around December of 2021. So those would be the next steps in the process. And my last page is a fun little index of all the times the city has looked to do something with the police station and our police forces, and the green in the bottom is where we're at today. So I'd open that up to questions or any of them?
I have a statement to make. I'm glad you put it up there. It's been going on so long, and now we're spending $10 million for a building, that if we would have built this six, eight, 10 years ago when they originally talked about it, it would have been just a few million, three, maybe four. So we're just, every time they wanted, they came up with a price, they would decide to spend thousands, tens of thousands of dollars on another study, and they would turn right around and try to say, let's merge, let's eliminate, let's become one police department. There wasn't public support for that, there wasn't availability to, to make that happen, it just wasn't feasible and it wasn't cost-effective to do that. We have a lot of volume in the city of Batavia, probably a little less than the total volume of the whole county, so we got to take care of our own backyard. We can't just dump this on the county and say, we're leaving and you guys got to support our police department now because we're not going to have one. That would be not a good thing to do, okay? And as a city, I live in the city, I expect to have a policeman and a fireman nearby when I need one. My house is on fire, I'm in trouble. That's why people live in the city, you have certain amenities, and, and you're in a concentrated area, there's just more going on, and you need our police department.
Yeah, yes.
So I just want to remind people, because as soon as we post this, there'll be the same people complaining, why don't we get rid of them, let the state police come in? It's not that easy, it's been studied at least four or five times, and we've wasted tens of thousands of dollars studying this, and it kept coming back to the same conclusion that we need our police department and we need to do something. And now our building is so dilapidated, it's almost at an emergency, and I don't know if it's even going to last until we can build this building now. So that's just, my little frustration is working for 33 years there and being promised a new building, pretty much on day one, 33 years went by with, are you going to have a job, are you not going to have a job, are you going to merge, are you not going to merge? And then they never built anything, and it was 3 million, I remember at one time was the cost, we were going to build in with the sheriff's department across the street, and then they, that got, we were ready to do that, and then they legislatively decided not to do that, so we were back on our own again, and it's been so many ups and downs. So at this point, we have come so far, and I think, I'm hoping that by the time we get ready to build, that materials, like you said, Mr. Veely, will come down to a reasonable price, and we could save maybe another million off that when materials come to a reasonable price. If not, we have an idea of what we're talking about, our debt is available.
Yeah.
And as, and City Hall will come off by then, and really, all, all buildings will be pretty much solid. I guess probably the next one in line is the police department. Everything else has been replaced over the years, police department's the only one, it hasn't been, and then I would think after all that, by 2036 or whatever, maybe they'll be looking at the fire department for some upgrades or maybe something, that'll be getting pretty old by then, and that'll be the next on the list. Hopefully, they don't have to go through the suffering that the police department did from 160-year-old building that they're in. That's a long time to keep a building that's not really made for the purpose it's being used for, so it's, it's, something's got to be done, so.
Just on the facility side, if you don't mind, council president, we do have a delayed $1.1 million project for the fire station and Bureau of Maintenance as well, that we still have reserves and facilities to cover portions, if not all of that, it's just been delayed due to capacity with the manager's office and DPW. So there is still improvements for those facilities to keep-
And I know, I know it's real easy to, to sit home and to say, you know, why do we, how, where are we going to get this? I mean, this is what we've been planning for, for years with debt, and then as soon as debt comes off, another facility that's in dire need, that one goes on, and that debt is always there to keep that in place, so it really shouldn't affect any other operations or any tax increases or anything, because it's debt we're already paying now that's not going to, that's going to come off of building A, and it's going to go towards the police department here. If we balance it right and we, we're patient and we wait, it's going to be 18 months to two years before we're going to be ready, and then by then, some of that debt will come off, and then it'll be, it'll be the perfect timing to finally get it done.
It definitely will affect the ability of council and the manager's office to recommend placing funds into reserves each and every year during the budget process. However, some council members know during the audit process, there's always the opportunity at the end of the audit to place funds into reserves if we have a decent year. So it, it is difficult to not be able to place that large amount of funds into reserves, but if we're using it for debt to get the project done, that's what level debt is for.
And that's why you put it in the reserve, so when things come up and you finally need to build a building, and this is a big step, and we're not saying, we haven't taken this lightly, previous councils have, have talked about this and have been distracted and gone off in other directions, and then it didn't get done, and then now they're leaving us with a $10.8 million building that could have been built for $5 million three years ago.
So we can at least say tonight, we're going to, we want to move forward.
Yeah, I would think at this point, this is an update, pretty much.
This is an update, unless there's some major reservations. The next step, like I said, would be for us to go out with RFQs for architecture, engineering, and surveyors, and come back to you with that information and the bonding resolution in December.
Right, so we have plenty of time for them to get more facts, more figures, more designing, things will get done. And, and again, I understand where people would be upset with certain things and not want to spend that kind of money.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have three questions, and I'll go them chronologically and quickly. Number one, is there any study being done or any plan what to do with the old building? Because if you look around this county, government collects buildings.
Yep, so I, I appreciate that question, and I just want to say that I, I don't want to hold the two mutually exclusive, however, the plan that I've worked through with, when I was on the Batavia Development Corporation, then the assistant manager, and now the manager, is to take that building, which is a historical building, and put it out to RFP so we can control the reuse of that building for historical purpose such as a boutique hotel or something of that nature, where the developer would use historical tax credits or could use them to redevelop the building. I just want to make sure we don't, you know, we don't hold up this project while, because that's not going to happen right away, right? We're going to need to do some kind of study or Main Street. I think the BDC was actually looking at a TAC grant, a technical assistance to help us figure out all the different incentives that could be applied to that building if we put it out to RFP, so there'd be a full package there.
Also, with the plan then, it can give us some guidance as to how much money to put into it for, even for emergency repairs, correct?
Yes and no. I think for emergency, we are at the point of shoestring budget with the current facility. And with roofs leaking, that certainly needs to be addressed for the health of the, the officers.
Okay, and the second question under methodology, was there any citizens committee involved in any of this? in any of this?
In the task force back in 2015? Yep. And the number two site was actually originally, they didn't have this site on their radar. And from all the research I've done, it actually came up as the second best site in the city behind Swan Street. So that's when the citizens task force was formed. I think during the changeover of managers, everything was kind of delayed. And so we got here to the next step, which was saying, okay, the task force identified ALBA, is it even feasible? What can and cannot, can we not do there? Does it make sense to pursue?
And there was the mall agreements too. All that stuff had to be started.
AL was on the committee.
Yeah, it was on the committee.
AL was on the police task force committee.
Yep. When Jason authorized that committee, we studied, we spent a lot of time with the study. We had several people from Rochester come in and look at the building from its historical aspect. You know, there was a special fireplace and everything else. At the same time, we had Mr. Turball on a committee. And we went down to the heating system. The entire building is a disaster, in S.B. and K. The fact that we put our police through this for the past twenty years, thirty years, it is amazing. It violates about every code that you have for a police station. And had we acted then, as council president has pointed out, we wouldn't be spending this kind of money. We talk, we talk, we talk, and when we get done, we talk again. We kick this can down the road. There's no more road, there's no more can. We have to do something to down it.
Was the citizens, I didn't get the answer a second. Was the citizens committee involved in the ALBA place process?
In the feasibility study for the one we presented tonight?
Yes.
No.
What, they'd been eliminated or dropped?
It was just an internal feasibility study that, done with an architecture firm.
Their part is done, this is not a leftover part?
Yeah, the approval from council was to hire architects unlimited to conduct the study.
And the third question, Rachel, is all these offices, administrations, are all these state mandated? Does everything meet state requirements?
I'm gonna say yes, but I'm gonna ask the police chief to, council member Baikowski is pointing out all of the different pieces?
Yeah. So that's something that's kind of roughness. We went through painstaking, time and time again, to make sure that any facility we build will meet the minimum requirements that we must have for whether it's juvenile interrogation, interview rooms, witness information, holding cells, et cetera. So that was one of the biggest parts that we did, and that's my involvement, you know, for the most part, was to make sure that we can look at this, see how to really get a grasp on all of the spaces that we need to have, have to have, not are nice, we have to have those.
And to just remind you, evidence.
Evidence.
You know, I mean, you can, why don't you cover that? They don't, people don't realize the mold and the poisons that people confiscate and they have to be in a secure place. And there's accreditation involved with that stuff too.
I just noticed some unusual rooms like family service room, women's lactation room, you know, and I just wanna make sure, hopefully, the state won't come out with any more new requirements before we get a bill. I know, the way things are going.
That's their agenda today.
Okay, thanks. That's it. Todd?
I just wanted to tell the chief that I understand it's gotten me very frustrated to have a leaking roof over there. If you need any grip buckets, we've got plenty left over from the mall.
Just to clarify, Rachel, so I understand this, right? The citizens committee talked about a lot of things, about where to put a building, what the old building, if we could remodel the old building. And they covered all that stuff in that. Then at that point, they made a decision and turned it on to council. At that point, their work is done. Now it's council's job to make it happen. So if someone feels that they should have been in on the design of this building, then, I'm sorry, that's the police department, the state, the architecture, that's their job to do that. Suggestions they could make, but I don't think we need to form another committee to design a building. I mean, some of this, at some point, some of these building features are gonna be private or not secretive, but confidential to the point where, you know, for security and things like that, we can't just broadcast the plans of a police facility to everyone.
Yeah, thank you. You're right. One of the things that Mr. Molino also pointed out, if you go back and check, is that we had allocated, we had a thousand dollars for the, once we vacate that building, to put upgrades in that building to make it for sale. In the entire discussion, we never talked about destroying the building. We talked about, and as our manager pointed out, a boutique hotel, law offices, something that we would go back on the tax rolls for.
Right. Like privately owned.
Right. We had the money set aside. We can check whatever happened to, if it's still there or something.
I think that was just added to the overall cost of the building at the time. But I think at this point, we can't wait that long. We have to do something.
Well, we had several people come in, both from Rochester and I think one person from Buffalo were not positive about that. And again, for historic preservation, what they would need, what they wanted, maybe improve. And they helped some great ideas.
Right.
You know, because of its status, we can't ignore it.
No, I love the old building. It's a cool historic building. And I'd like to see it in private hands and become something like the St. James Rectory did, became law offices. Whatever a private individual with the RFP process, we could have some control to make sure it is fitting in with the downtown and that it's taken care of and not just auctioned off to the highest bidder, which could be very minimal cost, and then it sits there and rotting, you know?
When it was first constructed, it has what is called a widow's wall.
Right.
Which is more unique to New England architecture.
Right.
And the way it's built is unique. That alone from a preservation point of view is worth keeping.
Some of those walls are like twenty inches thick.
Oh, easy, easy.
But they're, now they're in need of repair. So anyone else have any questions or concerns? Because I think we've covered everything and unfortunately, we, we're at this road and we have to. I think we would be wise to move forward. So waiting any longer, it might be a twenty million dollar building and then we're really hurting ourselves, so.
Thank you.
Okay. The roof, you wanna cover the roof replacement or did you kinda already cover it? Do you have more to add?
Yeah, well, so your original memo you received on Thursday has been updated. The project estimation is now a hundred thousand dollars, but still can be funded with facility reserves. Currently, there are 1.74 million in the reserves fund. And obviously, you saw kind of the reason why it's needed. The flat roof is over the conference room, lockers room, bathroom and detective offices. I believe the roof is thirty-five years old?
Nineteen ninety.
Thirty-ish, thirty-ish years old. So the request is
Usually fifteen-year high.
To advance that project to the next business meeting.
So if, try to remember, you know?
Sell member, you're correct.
I don't remember when they did it, but if they did it in nineteen ninety, that's when they started talking about merging and eliminating because it was gonna cost some money. And that doesn't, that totally makes sense because that's about the time on it. Anything else on that roofing? I mean, obviously, we need to do it.
Yeah, we gotta act quickly because the prices make a lot.
Yeah, well, absolutely. That's why we're gonna vote on it in the next ten minutes when we get to the business meeting.
Oh, you're gonna move it to this business?
I mean, didn't we, isn't that on there?
It's not. I left it to go to the following business meeting.
Well, there you go. If we want to, we can move it to tonight's business. I mean, because it's gonna get more expensive. Would that be, would that be within your timeline if we did move on it tonight for that maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're in consensus to move that to tonight's?
Yes.
All right. So we're gonna need a quick resolution drawn up by the time we get done with this meeting.
Isn't there one in the back of this?
No, not for, yeah, there would be a draft in this packet, but it wasn't.
We could do a final.
Yeah, we can do a final, so. We got time to do that. All right, now the ALCA plates are left grant, you wanna cover that?
Yes. Thank you, council president. ALCA place, the current Save-A-Lot building, as we all know it, would like to replace the sidewalks adjacent to the building that are currently deteriorating. The overall project cost for the sidewalk replacement is forty-seven thousand dollars. The building owner is requesting eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars from the RLF grant program. If you remember correctly, the RLF program used to be only loans. When I was at the BDC, we changed it to allow for grants as long as they were for downtown infrastructure or actually all over the city, infrastructure that would then improve the tax base. In this case, the project owner is a DRI grant recipient who is investing 3.1 million dollars with the commercial space downstairs and eight to 10 newly renovated upper floor apartments upstairs. I recommend that council move this grant request to a future business meeting. And I also want to note that interestingly enough, when the city sold that land to, I believe at the time, SuperDuper back in the eighties, the building owner, and it goes with the deed, is responsible for upkeep of those sidewalks. And I'm saying it out loud so it's in the minutes so we can find it again because we were trying to figure out if it was the city's job to improve the sidewalks or the building owner's. And it is in fact the building owner. So they would be replacing any sidewalks in need of replacement.
So just to be clear, they're investing 3.15 million and they're only, they're getting a one million dollar grant from DRI?
That's correct.
All right, so they're putting two-thirds of the cost in private investment?
Yep. And they segregated this project out. This project is just forty-seven thousand.
Right. And the grant would be for under twenty thousand because that's the cap, right?
Correct, yes.
And are they paying full property tax?
So they're paying full property tax on their today's value. The improvement in the value, I believe the building owner is going to apply for 485A, which is the incentive you can get. It's not a pilot. It's an as-of-right tax and real property tax law when you convert upper stories to residential, 485A. It's actually more lucrative than seeking a pilot through the academic development center.
Any other questions? So do we wanna move this to the next business meeting or the future business meeting when this is ready to go?
I had this to move then, but if you
This will be, the next meeting will be a conference. We'll probably be back into the summer schedule, we'll be doing two meetings.
I'll probably need a special business for next meeting.
That's not uncommon in the summer months. So we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that moves. Now the petition to rezone 211 and a half. This caused me some confusion. We already talked about 211. This is 211 and a half, which is actually a building behind 211. It's kind of a weird Main Street address, but it's still a Main Street address. Rachel, you wanna cover that?
Yep. You had before your petition to rezone 211 and a half East Main. A few weeks ago, council looked at the petition to rezone the property at 211 East Main Street. At the time, council member Baikowski asked, is it the full parcel? And I said, yes, because there's 211 and behind it is a large, basically parking lot. There's no buildings there, 211 and a half. So at the time, the thought was that the building they were building would fit on the front parcel, 211. During the planning and zoning review, or shortly thereafter, engineers from the YMCA, UMMC, Rochester Regional Health realized that the new construction would impact twenty-five feet of the parcel 211 and a half. Therefore, you have the recommend, I have the recommendation that council move the petition to rezone to the business agenda tonight so it can be sent to the planning and development committee to be reviewed concurrently with 211 East Main. So the rezone is exactly the same. It's going from a P2, I believe, to a C, crack the packet, C3.
That 211 and a half, am I understanding, is the parking lot?
Mm-hmm. So that will act, the building will actually extend twenty-five feet into it. And I'm not sure, I have a P2 to C3. And I don't know if you guys have this colored map?
Yeah.
Okay. But it's the shaded kind of reddish purple section behind 211. There's no current buildings there.
Yeah, it's weird because someone surrounded and then it's kind of like, 211 is still even behind, it's that little blue section, so.
Yep.
It's kind of a weird geography there for some reason.
This is still blue. We just shaded it so you could see it. So 211, 211 and a half would all become red, C3. So tonight, just asking to move it to the business agenda and refer it to the planning and development committee.
Yeah, so if we're moving it to vote to move it to the planning committee process, so.
Then when they come back, they'll be concurrent and together for you to press at that time for the public hearing and the seeker.
So any questions on that? Okay, so we in consensus to move that to tonight's business?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. End of the year budget transfer?
Every year, council receives requests to approve budget transfers in order to close out the prior fiscal year. This year, we only have a few items that need to be amended. The first is an increase in legal professional fees of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. The second is an increase of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents in bond principal debt that was entered into our budgeting software incorrectly. And the third is an increase of six thousand, six hundred and one dollars and twenty-one cents for personnel insurance related to COVID-19 unemployment insurance we didn't previously budget for. The total budget adjustment is forty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-one cents, and our contingency can cover this. I'm recommending that council move the year-end budget adjustments to the business meeting tonight for approval. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Just what's the term scribner's error?
Scribner's error, a typo.
It's an official, it's a legal term.
George taught me it, so I decided to use it for everybody.
I learned it Tuesday. I learned it Tuesday. It's an official term.
I thought it was scribners and then I, we had to look it up, it's scribners.
Takes eight years of law school.
We weren't paid for that.
How much was that?
That's why you go to law school.
That was free advice from him, I think.
All right, so we're in consensus to move that, right? Okay. The, now the reserve health insurance fund transfer?
Yes. The next resolution in relationship to budget adjustments to the healthcare fund, the fund saw a large increase in activity with many high-value claims. While some claims reached the stop-loss amount of a hundred and fifty thousand for our insurance, a hundred and fifty thousand is the stop-loss value, others did not, so they might have been just under. So we did have several high-value claims that we absorbed this year. The overage to the fund will be paid for by utilizing reserves and charging the other funds, the A Fund, the sewer of the water, the mall fund, to cover the balance. This is the second year in a row that the health fund has come up, has come in over budget. Luckily, council approved a hundred and twenty thousand to add to the reserve fund in the budget just approved on April first. But we are, with this hundred thousand dollars, we're allocating to pleading the reserve fund. We will bring in the hundred and twenty thousand through Lisa, through accounting after that. But I recommend when we meet as an audit committee at the end of August, that we really pay attention to the balance of this fund. And if we have the ability to put more into reserves here, that we do so.
Any questions or comments on that? It's kind of unusual. It's hard to see.
I think I'd say that
I don't know how else to even describe it. I mean, I think, you know, you could have even planned for some, a lot of us talked about that. Who could plan for some major shutdown of our country to the point where we have to be having these conversations? I mean, you can contingency all you want, but nobody thought, saw that one coming and that's larger with scale. So, but it is, it bears being watched, it bears to be watched.
We actually have a full actuarial study this year of the health fund, so that'll be interesting to see how that comes out. And I still think that the self-funded policy is the way to go. I think the health incentives that the employees go through to lower their premiums is super important too, catching issues before they arise and turn into something larger. There's just gonna be years where you have a lot of people getting, you know, having things come up that need to be done or different procedures that might cost, cost more than what we normally pay.
Any consideration to increasing the premiums because they are very reasonable?
Yeah, we could negotiate that with the four unions. That would certainly, certainly be something to look at. I think it's a great system of
I hate to ever bring something like that up, but they are very
It's a negotiating point, right? So it would, it would be something that would need to be, again, I hope we can look at the actuarial and see, look at some trends, see where we're at, give it another year and then try to shore up the reserves.
Yeah, if we can have a year of somewhat normalcy, that would give us an idea of what we're going to expect going forward.
It might, you know, and then there's always catastrophic claims.
I think they planned a year of normalcy.
Not having COVID shutdowns, I mean, that's, we were on a good track, our downtown was getting improved, everything got delayed a year, so we're not alone, but I mean, it didn't, it didn't make it any easier. Anything else?
Not on that, thank you.
Close out capital projects?
Yep. The resolution to close out capital projects would include the VAC truck. The city borrowed $420,000, as you remember, a bond resolution in the fall for the VAC truck project, which actually totaled $383,000. Therefore, there is a savings that will be transferred to unspent bond proceeds into the debt reserve, and that cleared $183,000. Mall roof one was complete, completed, and needs to also be closed out as a capital project. I have, the total cost is $758,000 in my head, but I'm positive. Am I close? Yeah, with pennies?
I did, I went, I don't know if you've been in there, but the buckets are gone, except for in the Dan's Tire, uh, pennies area, that's the roof they're doing this year. Probably, have they already started, or no?
They have the materials up there, I don't know if they actually started it.
Very soon.
I believe they started more than, I'm not sure why.
Ken's saying, yeah, Ken helped us with that project.
Well, it'll be very soon, it'll be within the next couple of weeks, they'll be starting and getting it done. So that should be the final end of the buckets. And we, and we still have the mall DRI, and all that's coming to fruition, so the timing is perfect, that roof will be fixed right in time for that to be cleaned up on the inside.
Yep, so the mall DRI will need to go out. The feasibility study completed by LaBella, funded by Empire State Development, the Economic Development Center of the city, and National Grid can be used to go out to RFP probably sometime in the fall, after DPW director gets through roadwork. Hopefully, we can RFP that out, and that'll address more of the silos and some cosmetic fixes inside the mall as well. But again, it's just a capacity issue. We have more projects than we have people to manage them.
Every time this comes up, we have many people contact me, or the same people, asking, why don't we just bulldoze it down, knock it down? The build, most of that building is privately owned, right? All those businesses are owned by those business owners. So we can't just eminent domain and steal their property and knock the building down. And the last estimate many years ago was, is several million dollars to just knock it down. It, it's just not feasible to do that. If we can put a roof on it for a couple hundred thousand and get it cleaned up and invest that grant money into it, and then see if it can take off from there, it, it's a better option, I think, than spending tens of millions of dollars to try to knock it down and buy out all these store owners, it's just, and put them out of business. It's not a wise thing to do, I don't think.
I still think we need to sell the properties we have that aren't on the market. That's quite a bit of square footage there. Taxpayers are paying the mall maintenance fees on those properties, and the cost, we need to be ready.
Yeah, that's got to be taken care of at some point. That's, one step at a time, we got to get the thing up and running. But I totally agree.
Maybe they'll be worth more once we have the improvements done, and that'll be the time to put them out of the block.
I don't want to sit it up.
Yeah, common sense tells you that once we can get the mall in a position where it's desirable for people to locate their business, or their office, or practice, then those parcels that the city does, they don't become valuable at that point. Not that we care how much value they have, we want to get them back on the tax rolls, honestly. But they become, they become a piece of property that's desirable, so people will be interested in approaching the city on, on taking title to something like that.
And that might be something we would consider as a body, to go through the RFP process so that we can control who buys it and where, you know, make sure it fits in with the downtown and whatever, so that it's not just sold to the highest bidder, and again, stays vacant for three years until we have to re-forclose on it once more. I don't want any more problems there. I think we should make sure it gets into the right hands when it gets sold. Just, just my opinion, but I mean, we've gone through this where people have bought property, didn't even know what they bought. Bought a hallway, and then they just let it sit, and like, why did they buy it? I mean, it, it's just another nightmare of foreclosure, after foreclosure, let's do it once and be done with it, right?
And more than let it sit, they haul in trash and fill the whole hall with junk.
Right, that's my point.
Well, John said the magic word, common sense.
Right.
Don't let a lot of it out.
Right. So any questions on the transfer for the capital projects?
Yeah.
So that'll get moved to tonight's meeting as well. And K9 Fund?
Yep, the last request on the special conference meeting is the release of $7,136.50 of the K9 committed fund balance to offset the cost of running the program. So the cost of running the program for this year was $9,468, less the $2,332 we brought in in donations in this fiscal year. We are still accepting donations, so any businesses or individuals that would like to donate to our K9 program, we are absolutely interested in having you do so.
Any questions on that? How's it, how's it been working, Chief? Is it, we're getting it back and getting it running again?
Yes, there hasn't been any high-profile cases that he's been involved with, but he has used on a regular basis, and the partnership is going well, he's been back to with the top supplier.
Good. So it's, it's going forward, so I think it's good to keep going if we can. Also, Dan, can we're in consensus to move that to tonight's business?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Motion to adjourn? Mr. Veely, seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rig?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jane Koski?
Yes.
Christian?
What's your question?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Okay, we, the call to order the business meeting. You've all had a copy of the April 21 financials. Are there any questions or concerns? So we in consensus to approve those? Okay? You've received a copy of the May 2021 minutes? Any questions or concerns on those? Are we in consensus to approve the minutes? Agenda item 41, 2021, the budget amendment for the Center Street Canalian Lions parking lot resurfacing. We talked about that at last conference. Mr. McGinnis? 42, 2021, the Casella Waste Project. 43, 21, the various committees and boards. Ms. Pacino? 44, 21, the rezone of 211 and a half East Main. Ms. Christian? 45, 21, the budget amendments for the 2021 fiscal year. Mr. Canaly? The 46, 21, the capital projects closeout. Mr. Veely? 47, 21, the K9 committed fund balance. Mr. Karaz? 48, 21, the Health Reserve Fund. Mr. Canaly? And I would believe it would be 49, 21? Which one was that, that we moved over? The roof, the police roof replacement? Is that the way it's written? I, I'll just put that, it should be good enough, but the actual thing will be different. Any communications?
Just Kings submitted their application for June 18th, celebration of Saturday, June 19th, from 12 to 7 p.m. This would be in Williams Park.
Any questions or concerns? Last I knew, they were looking for volunteers to help out at the event. I'm going to be out of town, or I'd go myself, but if anyone's interested, and anyone out there in the city is interested, contact the Just Kings, they have a Facebook page, and they were looking for help with various other activities and such at the event. So if you want to help and volunteer, give them guys a call. Next one?
The Batavia Business Improvement District submitted their application for the Jackson Square Concert Series. This would start Friday, June 25th, and every Friday until August 27th, 7 to 9 p.m. in Jackson Square.
Any questions or concerns about that? Okay, and the next one?
This is the second and third of the home-to-home concert series. 1 to 5 p.m., both Sunday, August 8th, and Sunday, September 12th. I think it's at 1 to 5 p.m. in Jackson Square. And again, it's a continuation of concert series they started, I believe it was in June.
Yeah, I think, I think they did it like online or something. They were, they were doing something online. This is Phil McDonald and that, because I saw it several times online, where they were giving little concerts online. So they're going to move into the Jackson Square a couple of times and, and finish up that way. Any questions on that? Okay. Next.
And all BB's Cherish submitted their application for a Fall Lender Festival, Saturday, October 23rd, 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. in the City Center Concourse. They did have one in May that went well, so they'll just have another in October.
Any questions on that? Okay, the City Council Conference meeting will be held on Monday, June 28th, 7 p.m. City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. City Attorney's Report? I know you're filling in, I mean, I didn't want to put you on the spot.
Not at all. I don't think there's anything to report formally, but if anyone has any questions.
Anyone questions? Okay, City Managers' Report?
Very briefly, I attended NICOM between Wednesday and Friday in Lake George. There were some interesting sessions about what other municipalities are or aren't doing to combat neighborhood decline, specifically housing decline. And the overarching theme I got is that it's really tough and no one has a great answer. So hopefully, we can bring in an assistant city manager here to start tag-teaming with me on coming up with inventorying properties and going from there with potential ideas of a citizens' task force or other things we can do in the community. And I certainly want to get scheduled council members to walk your boards with you over the summer when you're available. So the other items of note of the conference is the ARPA. I called it the CARES Act in the beginning, but it's the ARPA money we will be receiving and has been released to New York State for non-entitlement municipalities. New York State is holding it, making sure their formulas are correct before they release it. So they have till June 28th to release it or file for an extension. NICOM is working on our behalf, cities and villages' behalf, to make sure that, I have no doubt the funds will be released, they absolutely have to. However, the ability to spend them and the tracking of the money will need to be examined by myself and Lisa Neary very closely before we come back with full set of recommendations how to advance those funds to better our city. And that's it. Any questions?
Just an update, I don't know the city's aware, but that garage on West Main, it was the aftermath of the fire, it's gone.
Oh, okay.
Burned down, removed, it cites just flight ground. It was a fire in a garage that was a real hazard to young children, so.
So I'm glad the insurance company came through and the owner took care of it.
And our, our hands are tied because of the courts, too. Not being able to hear the homeowner issues, I mean, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, we, Bob and I were talking about the other day, the codes, there's tons of things we'd like to do to get people in compliance, but there's no court to back it up right now. They're just not even there yet. So unfortunately, you know, we, we, there's not much to say. I mean, other than people complain and say that's, the backyard's whatever, they can cite them, but the court's not in session for that stuff yet, right?
Anything coming back right now?
No. The last, the last docket was February 7th of last year, 2020.
So they're just doing regular, everyday biz, trying to catch up. This'll be the last thing to get back up and going, I would assume.
There was some entertaining, possibly virtual appearances, but that, that's not going to be feasible. So hopefully, by this fall, the end of the summer, we'll be back in court.
And this particular issue, though, I, with the manager, Ray, and sometimes pressure can be applied. To solve the problem so it doesn't become a court issue, and raise people who are real helpful, code and everything.
Good to hear.
It's interesting that you say that, and I don't want to belabor this report, but one of the other things that just crossed my mind that they talked about is that when there is a fire in a municipality, you can actually go to this, I'm going to get this off, State Financial Board, and approve the release of the insurance money once you know what the person is going to do with that. Chief, have you ever heard of that? No? So we're going to look into that, but we will, because if there's any way we can stop insurance payouts to someone who's not going to do what they need to do with a home that had a fire, we're certainly going to try.
So they have to remedy the problem first, and any money left over, they-
Good. It's almost like that, that the homeowner needs to be in agreement with the municipality. We need to vet them and make sure that they're going to use this money, because I didn't know, and, and again, we need to look into it, that the municipality actually has a say on the release of that insurance money.
Nice.
So something to look into that might help with things like that.
Weird concern, because the homeowner's moving out and saving some of his house, and it's his house.
Right, they grab the money and leave town, and that ugly structure is not getting, taking care of it with the taxpayer.
Some tool we might not be using today, we might be able to develop.
Good idea, good. Good thing to hear. Anything else, Rachel?
Yeah, thank you.
Committee reports?
I have one. This is really not a committee report. A couple of years ago, you guys might remember that we had some fine dumb gentlemen, represents up a TV All-Star team as a tenew, and got nipped at states. Well, that same team is going back with their 12U with a few more additions, and it's a great bunch of kids, great coaching staff, and if they get past regionals, they'll go to New Jersey. And if they beat, or they win in New Jersey, they're going to Missouri for the championship.
This is baseball?
Baseball, and they're going to Batavia.
Are you a coach?
I don't know.
I was going to say, you said fine coaching staff, I thought maybe-
Oh, I got two boys that are playing.
Yeah, right, for sure, I wish them well, yeah. Anytime you can represent Batavia on a larger scale, that's awesome.
It's the same group of boys that were here, you know, two years ago, and with a couple additions, and it's going to be, going to be great.
John, I just wanted to mention, too, over the weekend, our Batavia High School Boys' Track Team won the Division V championship. You may have seen it in the paper. I was a part of that because my son was involved in it as well. And I just want to publicly thank the, the Batavia Police Department and the Fire Department, who were more than gracious and welcomed the buses at the city line and took the kids all the way down, down through Main Street to the other end of town. The kids really loved it and appreciated it. It was, it was just a fun day, and it was nice to have the community involved in it as well, so I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah. And I just want to remind everyone, when you're in that kind of a sport, there is so many hours and pain and suffering and muscle aches and time put into it, you don't just show up and go to that level. So there's a lot of dedication on those kids' part, and that's, to be commended, that they stuck with it and put all the effort into it to get that good and do that well.
It during a very, very tough high school sports season, with all the adjustments, and a lot of these kids, actually, my son included, participated in two sports at the same time because the state allowed them to do that, which typically they would not be able to. So a lot of these students were participating in dual sports at the same time, and still were able to pull off a feat like this.
Right.
Hats off to the kids, they did a great job, and they, they made us proud, so.
Public comments?
Two weeks ago, the board committee, my board committee had a meeting, and I want to thank Sean, Steve, Ray, and Rachel. Things turned out really well for the problems that we were having, and we're going to keep the rest of everything and take it from there, and I'll probably be meeting next week with the committee again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the committee report, the parade went well, we had a great turnout. I was not made aware of any incidents. There were a few little minor snags. Of course, there's always your, after a event, evincers telling you what they did wrong. But it was less than the normal number, so. And today, being retired Army myself, I'm happy, very proud to say this is the 246th birthday of the United States Army. So Al, Ray, we're all celebrating a birthday, 246 years. Thank you.
Good.
And thank you for your service, actually. And happy birthday. Resolution 41, 2021.
Mr. President, I hit, under public comments myself, I hit a telephone call today and an email, and just wanted to bring them up briefly. Telephone call involved Center Street Development, and I did talk to the BDC Director- Telephone call involved, Street Development, and I did talk to the BDC Director, but, you know, hopefully, within the next month, we really need to see some activity there, because we're losing a lot of credibility with that, and I don't wanna belabor it. And the other thing was about this proposal.
What was your first thing anyone said?
Oh, I said, we're losing some credibility there.
No, before, how you're...
Got a phone call.
On what?
On the allocatory.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
On the project that's been ongoing for five years, and we've seen nothing done. Now it is a little holdup, I'm like, and the other contact was an email regarding water shortages and all that, and the person had some serious concerns, we never had these problems before, and they said, you know, maybe the county's over allotted it with commercial users.
Because this will probably, I mean, if these are items that we can discuss...
I'm just bringing them up.
Because I mean, I mean, if you wanna, because we talked about this last time, we don't wanna get letters being read, if people wanna show up and do it, otherwise, file a report with the city manager and let her, let her handle these things, right?
I mustn't have her at least to discuss, I just made a mention.
Okay, all right, thank you. Resolution 41, 2021, Mr. McGinnis, please.
You can call, Council President. I move a resolution amending to the 2021, 2022 budget and authorizing expenses related to the Center Street Canaly Alliance Park Lot Resurfacing.
Second to by, Ms. Christian? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canal?
Resolution 42, 21, Mr. Byakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President, I move a resolution tender into an agreement with Casella Waste Management of New York, Parker Agreement for Garbage Services in City Park and Main Street.
Second to by, Mr. McGinnis? Any questions or concerns? Has anyone had any comments or anything from the public? I, I just had one or two people contact me mostly concerned about not letting the trashcans get painted some gaudy color with a big sign on it, but I think that's all covered and it's our agreement, so I don't think that's gonna be a problem. Other than that, nothing really, I think everybody thinks it's a great deal, and I think it's worth trying.
Yep. We have nothing to lose, everything to gain.
And if it's a problem, we could always correct it or opt out or whatever.
Right.
All right, no other discussion, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Resolution 43, 21, Ms. Pacino?
Thank you, Council President, I move a resolution to appoint members to various city committees and boards.
Second to by, Ms. Briggs? Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 45, 21, Mr. Canaly?
Thank you, Council President, I move a resolution to authorize budget adjustments for 2021, I'm sorry, 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Second to by, Mr. Karas? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 47, 21, Mr. Karas?
Thank you, Council President, I move a resolution to authorize the use of K-9 committed fund balance.
Second to by, Ms. Christian? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Resolution 48, 21, Mr. Canaly?
Thank you, Council President, I move a resolution to authorize transfers and use in reserves for the Health Insurance Fund for 2020, 2021 fiscal year.